Yep.
Call the meeting to let the record show that this is a regular city council meeting held on Monday, November 21st. All members of council are present and the press has been duly notified. Okay? Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council is going to remain standing for a moment of silence. You are welcome to join us if you'd like. Thank you.
Leaving already?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Item number one on the agenda is the proclamation of the Bill of Rights. It is the 225th anniversary of that proclamation. Whereas the fundamental liberties secured in the first 10 amendments of our Constitution safeguard those principles known as justice and equality, and whereas these 10 amendments became part of the Constitution of the United States on the 15th day of December, 1791, and whereas it's fitting that this anniversary of the adoption should be remembered by the nation which for 225 years has enjoyed the immeasurable privilege which that charter guaranteed. The privileges of freedom of religion, freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom of assembly, freedom of the right to petition, and the government to redress the grievances, and whereas in since years, America has carried forward the spirit enshrined by the Bill of Rights, recognize the freedom of the values that we must work forever to uphold. Now therefore be proclaimed that we, the mayor and the council of the city of Tegu-K, do hereby proclaim Thursday, December 15th, as Bill of Rights Day in Tegu-K, South Carolina, and urge all residents of this city to commemorate the adoption of the Bill of Rights and rededicate its principles and its practices by displaying the flag of the United States of America. At this point, I'd like to ask Lisa Little Griffin to come up and accept this on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Thank you very much.
Hang on, Mayor. Wants to take a picture.
Item number two on the agenda is the Citizens Academy graduates, and I'm going to ask Susan Britt to come up. Susan is the one that runs the Citizens Academy, so thank you very much for doing that again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our third Citizens Academy, and so we had 19 people registered in this session. We've got 16 graduates. In order to graduate, you had to attend at least three of the classes. If you attended all five sessions, you're an honor graduate, and in this round, we have 10 honor graduates.
Whee!
So we're going to start first with the graduates, and the first is Samantha Miller. The mic can get the time confused, since all our sessions started at 6:30. Lisa Felton.
Congratulations.
Dustin Thompson.
Dustin, how are you?
Great, you?
No worries. Block away.
Tony Esposito. Judy Feigl. Feigl. Excuse me. I better get that one right for George. Jackie Mathis. And now we'll do the honor graduates. These folks attended all five sessions. Ramona Rice. Ron Felton. Bryant Presley. Walked from here right in time.
Timing is everything, isn't it? Congratulations. Want to take a picture there?
Don Putra. Barbara Williams.
Hey, how are you?
Hey, how are you just?
Good.
Congratulations.
How are you? All good places.
Terrence Zinke, and Terrence told me he'd probably be late, so I'll hold on to his for him. Thomas Lowery. Sandra Cleaver.
Congratulations.
George Feigl. I got that one right. And Tilly Stanford. Tilly's not here until this evening, okay. We had a great class, and spread the word, we'll be doing another one early 2017.
Can sit down.
Item number one C on the agenda is the Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas the city of Tegu-K celebrates its 26 years as a Tree City USA, which recognizes the values of trees to the community and has adopted the act of celebrating the first, excuse me, the first Friday in December as Arbor Day, and whereas trees contribute to the aesthetics of our community, and when properly cared for, increase property values and beauty of our neighborhoods, and whereas trees enhance the livability of our city through the storm filtering of stormwater and air pollution. Whereas the purpose of the proclamation of this day throughout the state of South Carolina is to encourage planting of trees to follow the actions of J. Sterling Morton in 1872. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the council of the city of Tegu-K, do hereby proclaim Friday, December 2nd, 2016 as Arbor Day in Tegu-K, South Carolina, and urge all residents of this city to observe Arbor Day by attending the Arbor Day ceremony on Friday, December 2nd at 1:00 PM in the Living Memorial Gardens. And I'm going to ask Tim Gillette, who told me he didn't want to do this, but I'm going to embarrass him to come up and accept this on behalf of the city. Item number two on the agenda is public comments. No one signed up for public comments on the sheet, but did anybody, does anybody have any public comments for council? "We're doing a great job. Things are great. You like it here." Closed public comments. Move on to item number three on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Council, before you are the regular city council meetings of October 17th, are there any questions, deletions, or changes to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number four on the agenda, under unfinished business, is the water tower painting. City manager Charlie, oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a change to the agenda. Item number nine B, I'd like to change to read legal vice, legal advice, as it relates to the Stonecrest POA.
I have a motion by David O'Neil. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dottie Hersey. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number four, under unfinished business, is the water tower painting. City manager Charlie Funderburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. At your previous meeting, council had asked for additional quotes in regards to painting the water tower right outside the Glennon Center here, and in closing your packet, we've given you kind of a breakdown of some additional pricing options, and if it pleases council, I'll just run through those. Option number one, you saw at your last meeting. Option number two...
Charlie, for those who weren't here at the last meeting, could you just run through them?
Sure. Option number one is painting with a high-grade paint, the entire water tower, it's the highest quality, it's $250,000, and that would require the city to take out a loan, or the utility department to take out a loan to fund that. Option two is basically the same, not quite as high a quality of the paint, but still very high quality, and that amount at $240,000. Option number three was really kind of the additional quote that council had asked for at the last one, in regards just painting the lower section where you've got a lot of paint peeling away from the tank. Basically, it's the same process you would have to go through in the previous two options, skirting the tank and taking it down to bare metal, and then reapplying the high-grade paint, and just to do that lower cone base would be $60,000. Option four was presented to council the last time. It's basically just kind of a spot touch-up. Pressure wash it, you're not really taking it down to bare metal, you know, throughout the entire cone, you're just treating the areas where the paint is peeled, not as high quality, but again, so that one is at 6,000. So as we were working on, working through this, Philip Jolly, who I do have here tonight in case council has any specific questions, was able to come across a company that has now provided us with a fifth option. This is 16,000 a year, but includes painting the exterior of the water tower twice, over, once in the first year and once again in the eighth year, painting the interior once, doing three washouts of the interior of the tank, and then handling our yearly inspections and maintenance on that water tower. As you see from the notes, that would be a 15-year agreement, but the city can cancel it at any time. Now, depending on what work they've done and when we cancel it, we would owe the balance, you know, depending on where, you know, how far down the road we were with it. So, you know, we could cancel before the eighth year, but we would owe for, you know, the first year's painting and any washouts and things like that. There would be a prorated kind of scale in there in the agreement. So to give you a side-by-side comparison, the option one, if you, if city were to take that, that's the $250,000 option, just to show you an apples-to-apples kind of comparison, for 15 years, you would get the exterior of the tank painted once, and the interior painted once, you don't, you get two washouts, and then your annual inspections, and over the 15 years, it would cost you $268,000. Option five, which is the one that I was just referring to, you get two exterior paints, one interior paint, three washouts, and all your yearly inspections for $240,630. So a difference of about $28,000 over the span of it. If council is inclined to move forward with any of the options, staff's recommendation would be to move forward with option five. Or, yeah, we need to wait and revisit this during the budget process for the upcoming year, but option five definitely gives us the most bang for the buck. Yeah, and in the next fiscal year, we could even look to include the other water tower as part of this annual maintenance program with this company as well.
Go ahead.
Couple of questions. Who does the yearly inspections now?
We contracted out to a company called Utility Services.
And can you, are you free to tell us how much that costs?
It's, the yearly inspections are about, yeah, they're about $500 to $600 a pop.
Okay, and how often do we do washouts of the inside of the tank?
Why don't you come on up to the mic? Let our utilities director field these questions.
It's recommended that we do it every five years, depending on sediment, turbidity of water, things of that nature.
But, and I think at our, at the last meeting, you, last meeting or two meetings ago, you said, Charlie, or I think you said, you know, that the interior of the tank is in great shape. So, I mean, how often, if we're washing it out and all of that, I mean, when do you anticipate, if you know, when would the inside of the tank need to be repainted and so forth?
Within next five to 10 years, is recommended.
Okay. All right, and if we go with the cheaper option, which was discussed at the last meeting, which is something in the ballpark of 6,000 roughly, the deal there is we're getting the bottom portion cleaned and painted, but we're not getting...
You're just getting the bad spots painted.
Just the bad spots.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're not getting the high-quality paint.
That is correct.
Okay, that's my questions for the moment. I'll pass it on. Thank you.
My thought, just, you know, as far as trying to be fiscally responsible, which we're all trying to do, if, when I'm looking at the timeframe of the high-quality paint, you know, 20 to 30 years is the highest of $250,000. We're talking about a 15-year service, that's 16,000 a year. If we push that out to 20 years with just that high-quality paint, that's an extra, what, $80,000 on the 16,000 a year? If we push it out to 20, say that, that option number one works out and we get a full 20 years out of that paint job, if we look at that versus option five, that's, now we're up to $320,000 for that same 20-year period. And so that's just my thought. At the 15-year comparison, the 16,000 a year definitely looks like the better option as far as for bang to the buck, but the quality of paint that we're using, if we're getting 20 or 30 years, every year past that 15 is another 16,000, which quickly, you know, just kind of skews the relationship there.
And I don't disagree with that. The thing that we liked about the option five with having the 16 a year, one, that's something that can be programmed into the budget and wouldn't require a, the utility to obtain a loan or financing on. All of the other options, with the exception of the, obviously, the six-grand option, maybe even the 60-grand option, would require the city, or the utility to take out a loan. The other thing is, it gives you a full service, it's not just the painting. So, I mean, with taking that, as you said, the 15 to 20 years, you know, you still got your annual inspections and things of that that still have to, still have to be taken care of, your annual reports to DHEC and things of that nature, that we're currently contracting out. So, yeah, taking out, we did it at 15 years only because that was the option from the, from that vendor was a 15-year agreement. We didn't look at it beyond the 15 years, but, yeah, I'm not...
One other thought is just, and Jen and I were discussing it briefly, I don't want to take any of her thunder, but at the lower, the $6,000 makeover of just the bottom, what do you guys foresee as far as what's not chipping and rusting now at the bottom? The rest of the water tower, if you had to put a timeframe, if we just did the bottom and rode that out, could we get 10 years out of it?
It's possible, but you have already some chipping and some other areas on the top of the tank.
Going up, okay.
It's not visible at this point in time.
All right, cool. Thanks, that's all I got.
Jen?
Basically, that's kind of where I was going with it. Based on the last council meeting, that staff was saying it wasn't required or necessary at this time, I'm not in favor of going with something that we don't need at this point. I do think it is important for our aesthetics for the lower base portion, because it is a high-visibility area. We don't want that to infer the wrong interpretation by those people who are coming to our area for the Glennon Center for events, the golf, tennis, all that. So I do think the aesthetics is important for the water-based portion, but based on the last council meeting, the $6,000 of that type of paint job was, I understood, not high-quality, but yet it lasted over 10 years. So if we're saying, in answer to Dottie's question, that it could be five to 10 years before we need the whole thing really done, I'd rather just see us fix the bottom and save the, until we have to do the entire thing.
Thanks, Jen. David?
What is the quality of paint on this option? Is it option five? I see you got, on option one, he's got highest quality, and on option two is just high-quality. What's the option five quality? Is it...
That is guaranteed by the manufacturer, Tanemic, that is actually the paint that's on there now. They've come out, of course, paint, just like anything else, as far as technology's concerned. The highest quality is what they try to guarantee, that they don't, they guarantee it to stick. They don't guarantee fading, they don't guarantee anything else of that nature, but that's what the manufacturer of the paint recommended.
I would assume this option five is going to be around for a while. We can probably do this at any time. I mean, the price might change a little bit, but I'd probably go with what Jen says then. Fix it now, we can go this option five, maybe a later date.
Yeah. I mean, I'm certainly not in favor of spending $250,000 or anything near it for something that's not necessary. It just sounds like craziness to me.
Yeah.
But before really making any decision, I guess would be nice to see, since you say there's other contracts, there's annual inspections, there's report writing, there's other things, it would be helpful, I would think, to sort of see that on a piece of paper that says, these are our annual costs for all the things that we do on a regular basis and all of our reporting, so that we can sit there with the math and say, well, gee whiz, if that, multiply that by 20 years, where are we?
And I apologize.
That's okay.
Philip did provide that to me, and I just included your bottom number, that 268.
Yeah.
That's your 250 from up above, plus those, the annual inspections and washouts and things of that nature.
So 17,000 a year, roughly. Okay, that's helpful to know.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have to agree with Jen. If we, if we don't do anything to the tower, it's got that broken windows thing that they used to talk about, if you have broken windows, that means you're going to have, you know, a crime somewhere else, and people are going to look at the, at the city as not being, you know, taking care of its, of its properties, and we have a lot of people who come here to play golf and they go buy it and everything. So I agree with Jen, and I guess I have a question, is, when was the last time it was painted?
2006.
10 years. So that paint on the bottom lasted 10 years.
Yes, sir. Or less than that, because it...
Okay, so say...
Well, if I recall correctly, I don't think it was taken down all the way to bare metal when it was painted either.
I'm sorry, do that again, I was talking...
It wasn't taken down to bare metal at that last point in time.
It's kind of like another patch job, but we're entering now.
Correct. It was just an overcoat, which is basically what, that $6,000 option, is basically that, but they did it on the whole tank.
Okay. If it pleases council, I'd like to hear what the citizens have to say about it.
If anybody, sure, why not?
Any comments? You guys look at it every day. Please, step to the microphone, state your name and address, and give us your opinion.
My name is Barbara Williams, and I live at 2021 Emerald Pines. I agree with Jennifer, I think we do need to make sure that the aesthetics on that water tower looks nice at all times, because we have, we have a lot of visitors that come here, and the location of that tower is visible by all of those visitors, especially that come up to the golf club. Now, one confusion I had, if I may ask Mr. Funderburk, you said that the maintenance on the tower is 17,000 a year right now?
A 15-year period, I think that was counted.
Correct. It's not 17 a year. We've got, we've probably got anywhere between, I would say, maybe $2,000 and $3,000 a year annual on it.
Okay.
And that's provided that, you know, not having to do repairs, just ordinary O and M on it.
Okay, okay. You answered my question then. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Since this is not on the agenda to make a decision, we can't vote on anything, correct?
Yeah.
We can?
Absolutely can.
All right, entertain a motion. Jen?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I make a motion to approve pressure wash base of tank spot paint and overcoat paint only, option number four, up to $6,000, to be executed by staff and to come back to us if it goes over.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Any more council discussion?
Just if we have the option to use a higher-quality paint, and I know they won't stand behind it because it's not going down to bare metal, and it comes in at 8,500 versus 6,000, do we have some flexibility or leeway on that number?
Not at this point.
Right, and that's what I'm asking, could we maybe change that, or you want to stick at 6?
Would you remove your, your second?
Second removed.
$10,000, not more than that. Anything over 10, they got to come to us.
I mean, do you have an idea about what it would cost to get higher-quality paint?
I'm not sure if we want to approve it, because if it's not going to bond well, who cares, the paint's better. I mean, that's really what we're talking about here. If they're not going down to bare metal, it's just like us doing our own paint job at home, if we don't go down to bare wood and prep it and prime it, doesn't matter what kind of paint.
Well, if they're going to pressure wash, it seems like it would get down to bare metal.
Do we have a Boy Scout going out for his Eagle Scout soon?
They're not sandblasting to bare metal. They're not sandblasting to bare metal.
I'll do it for 125,000. Oh, no, we're not, it's not a bid, okay.
Still stay at 6? I'm fine with that. I just wanted to ask the question.
That's a good question, I think.
Will you second Jen's motion the way it is? All right, so we renew as a second. Any other discussion? Call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye?
Aye.
Post unanimous. You got your basic water tower painted.
Match.
As close as possible.
Yes.
I think you should choose between Joey and Charlie to decide who gets what color. Could be orange or garnet, we're not quite sure. Item number five on the agenda, new business, is an introduction of a first reading of an ordinance to appeal, ordinance 505 and 506. City manager Charlie Funderburk.
Yeah, that's all right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we have a ordinance for introduction, first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinances 505 and 506. We're only amending one section of each of those. This is in regards to the game-on development. In that, in those ordinances, the developer had 120 days in which to close on the properties. Due to some unforeseen circumstances outside of his control, he's been able to close on the majority of them. The rest of them, he is anticipating being able to close on by the end of the month. But if we do not amend to give him additional time, then those ordinances basically become null and void, and the annexations that did occur as part of that would revert back, back into the county, and we would have to start this process all over again with public hearings and everything else if council chose to move forward. We would need to, if council does approve first read tonight, we would need to have a special meeting to do second read on November 30th, because that is the, the end of that 120-day period, to get that second day, that second one in. If he is able to close on or before November 30th, then there would be no need for that second read, because he would be within his allotted timeframe. Again, these are, he's gotten the majority of those properties, he's already closed on them, already owns them. There are three parcels right now, that, two of which will close next week, and then the other one, it's going to take him right up until the 30th to be able to close. And again, this is just some fluke, weird things happen with the property owners, but they're still moving towards a closing, they just had some things that kind of crept up that got in the way. So with that being said, I would ask for favorable reading at this time.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, it's not necessarily that we have to do this, but we're just being precautionary in case we do have to do it on November 30th? Okay, all right, perfect. Counsel?
All right, so we renew this second. Any other discussion? Call the question, all in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. You got your base of your water tower painted.
Match.
As close as possible.
I think you should choose between Joey and Charlie to decide who gets what color. Could be orange or garnet, we're quite, not quite sure. Item number five on the agenda, new business is an introduction of a first reading of an ordinance to appeal ordinance 505 and 506, City Manager Charlie Fundaburk.
That's all right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we have a ordinance for introduction, first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinances 505 and 506. We're not, only amending one section of each of those. This is in regards to the game-on development. In that, in those ordinances, the developer had 120 days in which to close on the properties. Due to some unforeseen circumstances outside of his control, he's been able to close on the majority of them. The rest of them, he is anticipating being able to close on by the end of the month. But if we do not amend to give him additional time, then those ordinances basically become null and void. And the annexations that did occur as part of that would revert back, back into the county. And we would have to start this process all over again with public hearings and everything else if council chose to move forward. We would need to, if council does approve first read tonight, we would need to have a special meeting to do second read on November the 30th, because that is the, the end of that 120-day period, to get that second day, that second one in. If he is able to close on or before November 30th, then there would be no need for that second read, because he would be within his allotted timeframe. Again, these are, he's gotten the majority of those properties, he's already closed on them, already owns them. There are three parcels right now, that, two of which will close next week. And then the other one, it's going to take him right up until the 30th to be able to close. And again, this is just some fluke, weird things happen with the property owners, but they're still moving towards a closing, they just had some things that kind of crept up that got in the way. So with that being said, I would ask for favorable reading at this time.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, it's not necessarily that we have to do this, but we're just being precautionary in case we do have to do it on November 30th? Okay, all right, perfect. Council, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction of first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinances 505 and 506.
A motion by Dottie Hershey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Stalford. Any council discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Item number five B on the agenda is the EMS agreement, City Manager Charlie Fundaburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As council will recall, over the past several months, just different reports and, and things coming from our fire department, Chief Zamanzki and, and his folks in that department have been working towards getting several of them certified as EMTs. And with, hopefully rolling that program out with the first of the year, having at least one certified EMT on staff per shift. As, as part of doing that, with conversations with Piedmont, Piedmont EMS, they have pushed forward the agreement that you have in your packet tonight. And again, this is really just an agreement so that it defines roles and responsibilities and things like that, so that we can be part of that EMS program through Piedmont. We will not be transporting by any shape or, or fashion. We're not buying ambulances or anything like that. But this will be so that we can continue with that, that project that we've, we've already started down. But council, before anyone decides, you know, if you do decide to make a motion, it needed to be contingent upon one thing, and I'm trying to find. In, in section six and in section 11, we need to insert some language, and I'm going to let Mr. McCleve kind of talk about that. Basically, it's just saying, it's in regards to FOIA, in regards to those two sections, so.
Well, it's, it's nothing, but they've had some standard language in here about non-disclosure, and I, I just think it needs to be subject to a FOIA demand or demand by a court of competent jurisdiction. It's a pretty simple insert. So I would just ask, if you are going to make a motion to approve it, you just put subject to the changes, edits regarding FOIA. And I can draft it.
Okey-dokey.
Okay. And there's no further financial obligations, is there, to this? Not to Piedmont, no sir. This doesn't change anything other than? That's correct. Okay.
I also have a question. I noted in the contract that it only mentions TK Fire Department. However, in sections B or item F, it does include the term volunteer.
Which B and F, which page?
Yeah, there's only, I only showed two pages. Page one, well, it's got TK Fire Department throughout the whole thing. There's no mention of the volunteer fire department.
That is correct.
However, it does mention in item F.
Which number? Under recitals. Oh, okay, I see.
Accepts as volunteers.
And, thank you, under party's relationship, it also talks about volunteers in there. So is the notion that our TK volunteer fire, firefighters, are any of them participating in this?
No ma'am, it's just our paid staff.
Okay.
So then why would volunteers be in there if it's just paid staff?
I, I think it's just in the recitals, I don't think that carries any weight. But since there's a concern, we'll just strike it.
Take it out.
Strike the phrase, or accepts as volunteers. We'll just strike it.
I would take it out, yep.
And this does not open us up to any additional liability by having this?
No ma'am.
Okay.
This actually will define what our role is as EMTs, and will actually help protect us. I mean, it's clearly, yeah, well, they have a, what is the title called, a medical advisor? Yeah, medical control advisor, so that here's the boundaries in which we are able to operate in, so that it's clear and concise, and nobody's operating outside of those boundaries.
Also, to, to be, aye. It talks about a volunteer relationship, so can we strike that as well?
Either through employment or volunteer relationships, sure.
References in it.
And then you go with double I.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of.
Provide updates on employment or volunteer.
We'll scan the document for the, for the term volunteer, that's not a problem.
So in the motion, we're going to say we're removing the term volunteer out of the whole document?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Council, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the EMS agreement with Piedmont, Piedmont EMS, contention upon changes being made to sections six and 11 regarding FOIA, and edits throughout the document, removing references to volunteer firefighters. And I'd like to authorize the city manager to execute that agreement with those changes.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Any other council discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, same or saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number six B on the agenda, excuse me, item number six on the agenda is the city manager's report, Charlie Fundaburk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things, I'll try to be as brief as I can. After the, after the special meeting on November 30th, we would like to do a workshop with council regarding funding strategies for Catawba Park. Campco Engineering met with them. They're about 85% complete on the construction documents for the city-owned property. We are anticipating a February, March groundbreaking for that facility. Yeah, obviously, that's contingent upon getting successful bids in and, and things of that nature. Looking to try to have them up here, hopefully by your December council meeting, to do a, to do a presentation for council at that time. But if we, if we can have just a, a brief workshop as part of that special council meeting, that would be great. State accreditation, folks, we're, we're at the police department auditing the facility earlier this month. They were up there for two full days. We're hopefully, we're looking to hopefully have that report back from them sometime in December or January, to be able to report back to council on that. And again, that's for the state accreditation. Is, is council did change their, the initial training that we had for the active shooter, to do the forum for the coyotes. If we could, is council interested in getting that rescheduled?
Yes.
Yeah, do we want to wait till after the calendar year, you know, with all the holidays and everything, and shoot for a later January, February date, or?
No pun intended.
Exactly.
Yeah.
At least Dottie does.
I think we should always be prepared, I hope we never need to use it.
I'll be glad to circulate some dates.
Yeah, so January would be great.
Okay.
I'm, I'm away late January.
Okay.
Me too.
We'll, we'll look, we'll look to early February, and see what we can, see what we can get on the books.
Maybe.
TK Drive paving has been completed, there are a few punch list items that the SEDOT contractor will be finishing up over the next few weeks. Our carbon gutter contractor has also got a couple of punch list items to finish up, but they are getting close to wrapping that up. The crosswalks will be re-stamped and temporary paint installed first part of December on those crosswalks, and then the permanent paint will be installed once the weather warms. Manufacturer does not recommend and won't stand behind the paint job if it's done now with the shorter days and the cooler temps, but they will be stamped in the white delimeter lines delineating it, that will be installed here in the next week or so.
And that's being paid for by?
By the state.
By the state.
Yes ma'am.
Both the temporary and the permanent.
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
The city is hosting an inaugural retired law enforcement breakfast on November 29th. It's being hosted by our TK Police Department. And the purpose is to serve those who have served us, and is open to retired law enforcement officers from around the country who now live in TK. So you don't have to have retired from TK, but if you are retired law enforcement, you are living here, would love to invite you out to breakfast, reservations are needed, so check the website for more information on that. But hoping we get a nice turnout there. Would like to congratulate Sergeant Rob Burns and Chief Scott Zamanzki, our fire chief, for being voted by the Fort Milltown's readers as the favorite police officer and favorite firefighter respectively. I believe this is the third consecutive year for each of them, so. Let's see, skip that one. Nothing But Cakes is hosting their grand opening celebration on Friday, December the 2nd at 10:00 a.m. And have invited council. I think Sylvia has heard from some of you, but if you are going to be attending, if you would just let Sylvia know, that would be great. The annual tree lighting will be held on Saturday, December 3rd up here. And Nothing But Cakes is actually sponsoring this year's gingerbread house, so looking forward to, looking forward to that coming up.
What time is the tree lighting, 6? No.
Yes, 6 o'clock.
6.
6 o'clock.
Yeah.
Yes ma'am. 4 now. Let's see. December 8th is our 11th Annual Guided Christmas Light Tour by the police department. That will be from 6 to 8 up here. If you would like for your home to be on the, on the tour, please contact Sergeant Burns with the TK Police Department by December the 5th. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone, our city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday this week for the holiday.
But there's no interruption to recycling for anybody that's normally a Friday pickup, right? They missed my can last time.
Yes sir.
The, the Christmas light tour, can you do me a favor, please, and inform Major Nelson that I will not be living in my house on December 8th? So I'm sure that the people who will be living in my house on December 8th wouldn't appreciate him driving by and
Yes.
horns and whistles and.
Correct.
Unicorns, you know, since I won't be there. But please don't tell them where I will be living.
Yes. We'll make sure to get that word to them. Yeah, he's going to cover that.
The, the coyotes thing. We had a, the, the forum for the coyotes. And I, I guess there were some, I guess 50% of the people were for trapping them.
Mayor, are we still on city manager's report?
Yeah, we are, I thought you were done.
Yeah, I'm done.
I'm getting ready to, to ask you a question.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so I, I gotta preface it a little bit, if that's okay?
Yes sir.
You know. So there were 50% that were for, there were 50% against, you know, spending the money on it. Recently, I had a weekend of, of talking to somebody about potentially him coming here and, and trapping the coyotes. I've spoken to everyone on council, pretty much, and, and they have agreed to ask the city manager to get more information, because I wasn't, I, I don't know all the details of that, and he's, he's been talking to DEHEC and, and, you know, and SCDNR, and as, as Steve Parker. So I, I, I would like council to say it's okay publicly for Charlie to have a conversation with trappers to, to potentially come into the city, and hopefully in December, come back to us with some kind of information about having trappers. Is that, everyone agree, is that okay?
Sure, I mean, information is fine.
Conversation, you know, it's not, we're not, we're not going out there and, and setting traps tomorrow. But, you know, the guy was talking to me and.
Yeah.
That's not my role, is to negotiate with trappers, that's Charlie's role, so, so, you know.
Comes under other duties as may be assigned.
Exactly. I'm, I'm picturing a coon skin cap, and you know.
I was thinking of, I was just about to call him Charlie Boone or something.
It just didn't, didn't go there for me. So, so I, I, I guess if it's okay with council for Charlie to have those conversations with trappers.
Sure.
Okay, good deal. All right, thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions for Charlie?
I do. Charlie, if you'd just remind everyone, I know about the drought, that there's no fire ban.
That is correct.
We have personally smelled some people burning stuff outdoors, so if, I'm not sure everyone realizes that. And also, in coordination with landscape, irrigating your yard with lake water, there's also some restrictions on that as well, if you could go over those?
To my knowledge, I think we're still in stage one. I've not gotten any updates as far as moving to mandatory restrictions, but yes, we have not had significant rainfall in over 40 days. We did get a little bit of rain the other weekend, but it wasn't much to write home about. We do have a, the burn ban's actually now statewide due to the forest fires in the mountains. There was recently, I think over this weekend, right Scott, in Western York County, about 53 plus or minus acres were on fire, separate incident. But still, everything is extremely dry. I know this is the time of year people like to be out back with their fire pits and chimneys and things like that. No solid fuel burning, as far as burning wood and leaves and things like that. Propane tank fireplaces, those are okay, yes. So if you've got the, the gas fireplace, outdoor fireplace, that is okay, but it's the wood burning. It is a ban. Yeah, please get the word to your neighbors, let them know, it, it is extremely dry. A lot of people are still watering, based on what we've seen in the most recent bills. Yeah, our water comes from Rock Hill, that's drawing it out of the lake, and those of us, those of, the folks in the audience that do live on the lake, you can see, it's down. It's down as bad as, I've seen it since probably 2007. We need rain, need it desperately. Yards aren't that important, not as important as drinking water. So try to, try to conserve and, and limit your, your water usage as much as possible. Good news is, I think the 15-day forecast has Monday through Thursday next week, 6% chance of rain. So fingers crossed that we actually, that actually comes through.
And then Charlie, a lot of residents have been asking me regarding the trucks coming in that appear to be making repairs to the fibers.
Oh yeah.
In regards to Comporium. Do you know if this is in fixing the part that they already said had been repaired? Like in the older sections where they said all these great improvements, yet still we were having problems in those sections? Or is this another area that they're fixing?
That I'm not sure. I know that the, the deep fiber guys that have been on TK Drive for the last several days, that is part of those fixing, you know, replacing those trunk lines with the fiber and things like that. As far as in the traditional sections, if people are seeing those, it may just be insulated, yeah, isolated incident type repairs. I'm not aware, but we can definitely reach out to our contacts at Comporium and see what we can find out.
Okay, thank you.
And I just have one quick thing. I promised I'd ask the question, I told you there, there wasn't a whole lot we could do right now. But in regards to senior citizens and the flat rate utility bill, specifically older TK where TK, where it's a higher rate, you know, I don't expect this to do anything like the gas company does and do a $5 or $10 maintenance fee when we're not using it. But is there anything we could look at as far as for helping our senior citizens out when they're traveling for two or three or four months at a time, whether it's summer or winter, and their house is basically vacant, but they're coming home to a two and three, $350 bill? Whether it's some type of rebate, you know, and what is it, 60 bucks? What's the flat rate back there?
For, on the sewer?
Yeah, the flat rate, for, for water and sewer, yeah.
Well, we don't have a flat rate for water and sewer, we have base rate for, for the water, which is $11.81. On sewer, it's 50.
52.95.
2.95.
Right, and so if, if there's a senior citizen that go see their grandkids in Arizona for two months and comes back, and they've used it zero, is there anything we could possibly look at for the futures? Just, I mean, it, it, the, the system seems to be doing well once all, all, all the updates are done. Is there anything that we've looked at in the past we could possibly look at to give a little something back? Whether it's a small rebate or something back to our senior citizens that may be traveling, or not here and still paying that same rate, or close to the same rate that they're paying when they are here?
Well, first and foremost, it would require council to amend your, your fee schedule.
Right, and all I want is conversation.
And, and, I mean, I think it's, it's a conversation that definitely happened around the, the, the new budget, you know, as we start putting together 16, 17, or excuse me, 17, 18 budget. Yeah, lots of utilities will do a, a flat rate for, for seniors and things like that, to where basically they're paying the exact same amount each month. And then at the end of the year, you know, they base that, that amount that that person pays based on what their history has been. So they, they figure out what the average is, to help them out if they're on fixed income, things like that as far as budgeting. Now, typically, your base rates, and it's the exact way we set up the TKU1 base rates, was we, they're covering all of our fixed charges. So if everybody shut off their water, everybody left town for the month, we still have bills that have to be paid, you know, that are outside of water and sewer. You have payroll, bonds, you know, things of that nature. And the, the base rate was, was meant to capture those. Yeah, but, yeah, a lot, it sounds like a lot of what you're talking about, yeah, I mean, we, we could analyze it pretty good ourselves, but, yeah, I mean, if council wants to entertain doing a, a rate study. doing a rate study, I know York County recently did one, town of Fort Mill has recently gone through one. Yeah, we've never, we haven't done one in TK in probably eight years, yeah, long before we did purchase TK2. Yeah, the thing that gets me nervous about adjusting rates and things like that is we have a debt service covenant, we have, a ratio that we have to meet due to the bonds, and it's in our master bond ordinance. We know that the rates right now, it helps us achieve that, and make sure that we are able to fund that debt the way that the banks tell us we have to. Adjusting it at this point, I mean, there might be some adjustments that could be made, but I don't know.
I don't think they're asking for anything permanent, and, you know, your senior citizens could voice your opinion as we have the conversation or have more dialect about it, but you're close, Dave, for sure.
So what would happen if a senior citizen called up City Hall and said, "I'm going to Arizona for two months," and they called us and told us that? Can we, can we say to them, "Okay, since you're going to be gone for two months, your sewer bill will be reduced by X." And we could monitor that by the amount of water that goes into the house, because that we do monitor on a meter. So if nothing's going in, is there a way for us, and I don't know if that's the answer, is there a way for us to say to somebody who's got nothing going in for a month or two months, and they've called us and told us?
Yeah, you only get it every couple of years or something.
It's not something that I've ever seen done with other utilities, but it's something that, I mean, we can definitely research and look into.
I think we need to do more homework on the whole thing.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, Ryan asked for a conversation, I think a conversation is fine, but I'm not opposed to it, I don't know enough about it, but I also know that we will have citizens that would say, "Well, I'm not a senior citizen, but I've gone to Arizona for two months, so how about me?" I mean, so we have to, you know, we would really have to, again, talk through the whole thing and figure it out, but, I mean, I think it's always a conversation worth having.
I think it's a great idea, at least the average bill, a lot of companies offer that. I don't know how complicated that would be, or if that could really be helping those people with fixed income too much, but I think that could at least, if nothing else, that could be a service that wouldn't be, we wouldn't be losing anything.
Yeah, doing those average, the average bills, yeah, I mean, I've talked with City Rock Hill about how they do theirs, and basically, on the 12th month, you know, if the usage was over the average, that 12th month is where they're paying, paying the balance. If it was under, then they're getting a credit. Yeah, as far as setting it up in the billing system and things like that, little cumbersome, but not overwhelming, I would say. I mean, it's definitely something we can, we'll gather as much information as we can between now and, before we start our budget conversations with counsel, to provide you with as much information as we can on it, and see which direction you want to go.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
Anything else for Charlie? Item number nine on the agenda, or, excuse me, item number seven is public comments. Are there any public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Sue Galaski, Nob Creek Lane, I just want to tell you how much I enjoy Rewind. It is informative, it's positive, and she makes me laugh. So thank you all for letting her do that, she does a great job, and I hope you will report that to her.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public comments, I'll open it up for counsel comments. Ryan, you want to start us off?
None for me. Happy Thanksgiving, guys.
Jen?
Happy Thanksgiving also. Just want to let you know that the free little library in the Living Memorial Gardens will soon have Christmas and other holiday books, so if you have little ones, or adults, Michelle McGuire has, basically has a library in her garage, where she switches the books out with beautification members like Barbara, and that way we kind of inundate it with the timeliness there. If you do have any books to donate, contact any beautification member or Michelle McGuire, it is a hotspot up there, that library. And then on December 13, that's a Tuesday at 8:30 a.m., I'm going to be teaching everyone up there how to do your winter cutbacks for your roses. So bring your bypass printers, your buckets, and your gloves, I'm going to teach you how to do it, and then you're going to do the demo on the plants up there. You guys are going to help us actually do the winter cuts, so that's the plan at least. And if you're looking for holiday gifts for people, we have, the beautification committee does have TK sweatshirts, hats, shirts for gifts, and you can contact through Facebook or the website page for the beautification committee. And Arbor Day is December 2nd. I did hear that proclamation said the 4th, but it's actually December 2nd, it's a Friday, so.
Oh, it's the 2nd, yeah.
I'm sorry, what did I do? Did something wrong? I just said Friday.
Yeah.
I know, but it says December 4th.
Oh, the proclamation does.
At least the one reading. The one I was reading on the page. Our packet was wrong.
Come on, Jen. Dottie?
No, nothing. Happy Thanksgiving, hope everybody eats well and has a safe travels if you're traveling out of town.
Mr. O'Neil?
I just want to say the same. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving, and I just want to make note that we've had four more police attacks recently in a very unsafe world we live in. We really appreciate our police force here in TK, so if, just a note, if you do come across our TK Police Department, make sure you tell them how proud we are of them, and comply with them, whatever they want you to do, and just don't put them on edge, just, not that they would be anyway, but comply with everything they want, because we don't want to have any incidents here with our police force here. They're such great people, we're so proud of them, and we want everybody to be safe and happy here in TK, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, David. A couple things. November 28th, little ones at home, you can drop your letter off to Santa Claus at City Hall. We've been able to make that connection with Santa again this year, and Santa will respond to your letter. If you get it to us no later than 5:00 p.m. on December 9th at City Hall, there is a little mailbox there, they come and pick it up, and Santa Claus will return your letter. So that's a really cool thing that happens. As Charlie mentioned, the tree lighting is December 3rd at 6:00 p.m., and the Fort Mill Chorus will be here again, performing for us Christmas songs, and Santa Claus will be here. And he's really being busy this year, because he's also coming on December 17th, riding around with our fire trucks, visiting all the neighborhoods and stuff, so keep that in mind, too, on December 17th. And then I would like to say thank you to the residents for your patience getting TK Drive repaved. Long overdue, it was more of a challenge than we thought, but we thank everyone for their patience. And just watch your speed, because the road's a little slicker, so you may be going a little faster. I've noticed I've been known to do that once or twice on TK Drive of late, and I blame it on the fact that it's newly paved. Happy Thanksgiving, happy and healthy. If you're traveling, be safe. If you're not traveling, be safe, and hopefully your family comes and visits you. With that, counsel, I'll go into item number nine, which is an executive session, and would someone like to make that motion, so we go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session for a discussion incident contractual matters regarding city-owned properties, for to take legal advice as it relates to Stonecrest POA, and for a discussion of personnel matters.
I have a motion by Dottie Hershey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David O'Neil. Call the question, all in favor, seeing we're saying aye?
Aye.
We're in executive session. Good night.